We'll be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening. As the hour is seven o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance this evening, those watching at home on TV, and welcome to the August 8, 2022 Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the board. Joining us via Zoom this evening is Select Woman Lovey Rantriolif. Good evening, Select Woman Rantriolif. Can you hear me?
Good evening. I can hear you.
Okay. And Select Woman Rantriolif was unable to participate physically in the Novak Room this evening, but she's joining us via Zoom. And Select Woman Rantriolif, are you alone in the room?
I am alone in the room.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Our Vice Chair, Select Woman Ollie Cowan, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And the Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
Select Woman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. And I'm Nico Papakostandis. We don't have any board interviews this evening, so we're going to jump right into the agenda, which will begin with a bid opening for the sewer siphon project. We have three bids to read this evening. Madam Clerk, I will read. Okay. Okay, in the first bid, the addenda number one is complete. The contractor name is J.A. Polito &amp; Sons from Schruzeri, Massachusetts. Okay, the total bid is $1,989,250. And it should be noted that the bid bond is attached. The second bid also includes the addenda number one. The contractor is Earth Northeast Earth Mechanics from Pittsfield, New Hampshire. The total amount of the bid is $1,681,975. Okay, the third and final bid, the addenda number one is complete. The contractor is N. Grenessian Sons Incorporated from Salem, Massachusetts. The total amount of the bid is $1,627,750. And it should be noted that the bid bond is attached.
Mr. Chair, I move to forward the bids to Department of Public Works for review and recommendation. Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, although Madam Clerk with a roll call since we have a member in Zoom.
Select Woman Rantriolif?
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come up and comment to the Select Board. We do ask that if your comment is relative to anything on the agenda, that you wait till that agenda item comes up. If not, then please step up and state your name and address for the record. I see your hand, Mr. Hamill.
Hi. Good evening. Jerry Hamill, 17, Little Pine Lane. Back at the end of June, when I was paying my property tax and water bill, I went to pay the water bill, I saw something that was a little concerning on the water bill. It wasn't at first, but it was a little charge, a little late charge on it. When I went down to the water, to the tax collector's office, and I did ask them about the late charge, it seemed like it was higher than it should be, they said, "Well, what we do now is we, basically, if you're three days late, we charge you for full month interest." So basically, they were very helpful. They gave me the information, some of the information on stuff. I went back and checked on a couple things, went to the Attorney General's Office at Consumer Affairs to see what they thought. And the one thing that bothered me, it wasn't the small fee, it was a matter that it wasn't noted that it's something that the town was doing. There's nothing on the bill that says that we're going to charge you this fee if, you know, if you're a couple days late. And normally, I think, with most people like myself, we just pay the bill and that's it. But I got started thinking, you know, how many people are late in this town? How many people can't pay their bill? How many people are having trouble? And what is the town really getting on this whole thing? And when I went back to the waters, when I went back and talked to the Deputy Tax Collector, she said, "Well, there could be like 20% that are delinquent in this town." So this little bill, this little couple dollars could equate to, you know, a few thousand dollars of revenue every month for the town. And it's not the fact that they're doing that, it's something that I've always hated from a credit card company, that they have you pay in interest, and after you get done paying the interest, if you're a day late, they zap you with another fee. I've never thought that was fair, and I really, I was really concerned to see that the town was doing it. But my biggest concern was there's nothing that says that the town's doing it. And it was about a month ago. I came back today, and the Deputy Tax Collector, who's extremely helpful, basically said, yes, she's looking into the matter, checking into other towns, and it may be an oversight, and they're looking at putting it on the bill. That's all well and good, but I'm here tonight to talk to the select body to see if you really feel that's something, that's something that's really fair to do to the people in this town. I mean, as it is, we are charging them 12%. And, you know, they have to pay that. But to charge them another fee on top of that, I think it's a little bit outlandish. And in the need to make money, I think that, I think we go too far when we start doing that. So I know this is ongoing. I know that she did talk to the tax collector, which is, you know, Russ, and hopefully something will happen on this here. But the take from the Attorney General's Office is, basically, this is actually not a legal thing that can be done, being done right now. So before we went too far, I just want to make sure that we kind of do what we're supposed to be doing and make this decision correctly and either negate this whole thing, or at least if we're going to do it, at least put it on the bill so people know. Any other, any questions on the bill at all? Are you all set with that?
No, I don't have any questions. I'll just make a, you know, I know it's public comments, sir, and I don't want to get into deliberation, but I'd like to just respond, if I may. Number one, Mr. Dean, if we could maybe by the next meeting have some clarification for the board on what exactly the practice is, why it's being done, how long it's been done, and Mr. Hamill has obviously talked with the Attorney General's Office, so if we can rebut or explain, you know, any practices that may not be as they should be. But Mr. Hamill, I would, I would argue that, I'm going to speak for myself, I won't speak for the board, I'll speak for myself. The town of Exeter is not trying to make money.
I'm so upset, Craig.
The town of Exeter is not trying to make money on delinquent bills, and I'm sure...
Well, that's what I would hope not.
I understand. I'm sure there's a reasonable explanation, and that's why I'm asking Mr. Dean to come back at the next meeting with an explanation. One thing I'd like to know is, I know the current policy and procedure that's in writing is one that's been in play, Mr. Dean, for quite a while, and I know we have a new collection software or service. Does one not jive with the other? Maybe that's something you could look into and come back. I'd like to think that there is a perfectly reasonable explanation, Mr. Hamill, but I can certainly say that, speaking for myself, if we're doing something that we should not be doing, we need to correct it. I do not think that the town of Exeter, the Select Board, the tax collector, and anybody working here is trying to make money off of folks that are delinquent.
And I can understand that, too. And I know that's what you're feeling, as we have talked about this. But it's, it is happening. A month has gone on, nothing's been done as of yet, so it's concerning. It's very concerning to me. And as far as even, it says everything is supposed to be equitable to what, 12%, 12% per annum? So I mean, that's what the writing in town is. There's nothing that says at any place, there's nothing on the bill. So, I mean, number one, we're not following a procedure that we should. And number two, are we doing what's right?
And we will get to the bottom of that, and Mr. Dean, we'll have that on the agenda for discussion item at the next meeting.
Yes, we'll look into it.
While Mr. Hamill is here, though, Mr. Dean, I know that I brought this to your attention a couple of weeks ago. Is there anything you'd like to add that I haven't said?
Well, just to, the, my understanding is that our ordinance is what governs what, what we charge for a late payment. And the way the ordinance reads, it says, "Amounts not paid within 30 days shall be subject to a late payment charge of 1% per month on the unpaid balance equivalent to a 12% annual rate." And then it goes on to say, "Late payment charges shall be calculated on the entire past due amount for the delinquent period. And accounts that are unpaid after 90 days are subject to service being shut off and collection fees may be incurred, that may be incurred by the town is, shall be borne by the customer." So what we'll do is, we'll do an analysis of that language in our current ordinance, and then we'll get back with you at a subsequent meeting, like you requested.
Please. And if we need to change the wording, if we, if we speak with counsel and we need to change the wording, Mr. Hamill's brought up the Attorney General, so if we can just make sure that our wording that has been in that policy since how long?
It predates me, so it's at least pre-2005.
If it needs to be changed, then we can look to change it. And also, if our software is doing something that's not accurate or isn't accurately billing the late fee, then we need to look into the software as well.
We will do that and get back with you.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Hamill, any other comments?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment this evening? Okay, moving on, we do not have any proclamations or recognitions. At this time, I would ask the board if there are any revisions or amendments to the regular meeting minutes of July 25, 2022. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of July 25, 2022.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Rantriolif?
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening. Jump right into our discussion items. And first up, we have Mr. Scott Marsh from MRI, and also Janet Witten, our town assessor. Mr. Marsh is a contract assessor from MRI, and they're going to talk about valuation update. So, Mr. Marsh, Ms. Witten?
Thank you. Good evening. Scott Marsh, Municipal Resources, Contract Assessing Agents. Every year, the state reviews our assessments in sale prices and compares them to get what's called an equalization ratio. What we do is, we review that information as well. And over the past several years, we had found there was a trend occurring where mobile home, on manufactured homes on rented sites, were at a ratio that was different than the town's overall ratio. We also found there were some condominium, residential condominium projects that were seeing the same thing. So similar to what we did in 2014, we reviewed sales over the past several years of the manufactured homes and compared those assessments to those sale prices, and we found that they were out of line with the town's overall indications. From the research that we did, it appeared that, you know, the difference was, we needed to adjust the project factors for each of the mobile home, manufactured home parks. There's a factor that's built in for the different locations and things like that, and so we ended up making those adjustments. As a result of making those adjustments, the assessments become much more in line with the town's overall average. We're estimating this year, the town's ratio is going to be somewhere around 68%, which is just showing you that values have still been increasing over the past several years. Two years ago, it was at 89%. Last year, it was at 79%. And this year, 68 or so percent is where we're estimating it's going to be at. We still have another month of sales to go through. So if we apply the adjustments that I had listed here on the sheets that were provided to you, you will see that those indications are much more in line with those town's overall average. The other indications that we look at is called the C O D, which tells you how close everybody is to that median indication. And those all get better as well, which says that we're doing what we want to do, is to bring them more in line. The whole purpose of assessing is to make sure everybody's paying a fair and equitable proportion of the taxes. So that's what this analysis and these recommended adjustments will do, in our opinion. Any questions that the board has, or?
Any questions from the board?
Scott, do you want to mention the 90% to 110 ratio that we're supposed to be under?
Well, the 90 to 110 would be every fifth year that you're required to be. This is the interim, and in the years in between the five-year statutory requirement to bring them in line with market value, you want to try to maintain equity so that everybody is at that median ratio indication. So whether it be 60%, 90%, you want everybody to kind of be in that range so that, again, everybody is being proportionally treated. Last revat we did was back in 2019, so we still have a couple more years before we're required to do an update of the whole town and to bring it up to that market value.
What is this going to do to the individual tax rate on average?
To the town's overall tax rate? It probably wouldn't have any impact on the town's overall tax rate. We still increase, the town's total value is increasing roughly, I think, 25 million as a result of building permits, and if we apply these changes. So you're still seeing an increase in your town's overall valuation. As far as, you know, what kind of impact these changes would have, I don't know for If I may, the tax rate is really driven by your spending, so if you've spent more than the tax rate's going to increase.
I know on the town side, just to comment on that, we endeavor really to keep our tax rate pretty consistent from year over year, so an increase in valuation, at least on the town side, doesn't necessarily have a large-scale impact. And I think that that, you know, if I could speculate a little bit about where we will be in the fall, I think we're going to see the same trend on the town side. So there's that.
And then what about to individual taxpayers?
That depends on where you're at. We have numerous people who have tax exemptions.
Yeah.
Elderly, they wouldn't see any change because we're not increasing their assessments above that area. Again, we're just bringing it to the town's overall average. But there are some that will see ranges from people seeing no change to people seeing a thousand or more dollars change in their assessment.
Right.
Is it customary that there'd be a lapse of eight years, I mean, between reviewing this? It was last reviewed in 2014, and now it's 2022?
Yeah, well, we did the same process back in 2014, which is roughly the timeframe when we started with the town here, and we found the same type of trend. We usually, it takes a couple years because you want to make sure the trend is continuing, and it's just not a one-year blip in the market. Right now, obviously, you know, manufactured homes, because of their lower price, when they sell for $10,000 more, but you're only a $20,000 manufactured home, well, that's a 50% above what you, you know, the value is. So it sees bigger proportional changes on a much quicker basis.
Select Woman Cowan, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I think Select Woman Cowan asked it.
He answered my question with the last, what year the last one was.
Mr. Dean, what are you looking for from the board tonight? Just whether or not there's agreement with this or not?
Yes, that's the question. If you want to move ahead and finalize this, then we would get letters out to individual property owners after that.
I don't know that I see the need to wait unless there are objections to the reevaluation. And I don't... Looks like there's a question from the audience. Okay.
If you come up to the microphone, thank you. And if you would just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, sure. My name is Betty Jean. My friends call me Jeannie, and my last name is Wright. And I'm a resident of the Exeter Hampton Co-op. I serve on the Board of Directors. I sit in a very similar position that you do, except my town is much smaller. It's made up of about 52 homeowners. I do want to say that I live in a home in a community. I don't live in a mobile, and I don't live in a park. I live in a very nice home. And I have prepared a couple of statements tonight that I think, first of all, allow me the opportunity to do this, which I don't often have a chance to, but also might speak on behalf of what I feel like the 13% of the manufactured housing owners in this town might want me to say on their behalf. So, again, I'm only one homeowner of about 13% of people that own a manufactured home. And again, as I mentioned, they're not mobile, they don't move. And no matter how small or how much stigma comes with it, we have a decent place to call home, and it's very affordable. As a matter of fact, the manufactured housing communities in this town provide a really good avenue for folks to find affordable housing in Exeter. Most homeowners are pretty happy to live where I live because they've ended that cyclical nightmare of renting, right? So that they finally get out of the renting avenue. And for years, we fought in this stigma where we couldn't get funding or money for home improvements, and we were able to find this opportunity to really find a place that we could all say, "Hey, oh my gosh, we finally have a slice of the American pie." And as a matter of fact, I'm pretty certain that we have found a solution to affordable housing, and nobody's realized it yet. Because my housing footprint's pretty decent, and I can live there. But let me tell you about who my neighbors are. My neighbors are working-class individuals, and yes, some of them are retired, they're on fixed incomes, and some of them are disabled. But there's others who are working, they don't qualify for tax exemptions. They work at the local supermarket, sometimes working seven days a week trying to make ends meet, or in restaurants. I can tell you, we're all living in a time right now, we're all saying, "Oh my gosh, what is happening to prices around us?" Our water bills, and at least in my community, we're on public water and sewer, our water rates have increased 250% over the last three to five years. I have a homeowner in my community that told me she will no longer take a bath, something she really enjoyed, because she's afraid that her water bill is increased. We don't have credits for people on fixed incomes that do that. I can tell you that we're also, we steward the communities that we live in, and whether or not you know it, some of you probably do, I know Russ does, that I live in a co-op, and that means that years ago, we took ownership of the land beneath our homes, and we collectively own it as members. So we each pay something in, we volunteer our hours, we volunteer our efforts. I spend countless hours, probably just like you do, trying to figure out, like, how are we going to manage? And we've done quite well with that. We've really been able to maintain rented or affordable. I know some communities are fighting differently than others. In my community, we've been able to repair a million dollars' worth of infrastructure thanks to the town of Exeter. We were able to... We were able to apply for some grant funding. So we've done a lot of really cool stuff. But the folks in my community are still living on the edge. That's what I'm going to tell you. So when I was at a meeting recently with some of the town officials, and they mentioned this, I kind of went, like, oh, my gosh, I'm like, I don't know how some of my neighbors are going to be able to drain. If I calculate this accurately, I think I calculated that my co-op, the assessment would go up about $12,000. Okay, that's going to mean a rent increase for everybody in the community. So no fixed rate is going to help that. And it's also going to mean their personal tax bills go up. And if they're new to the community, which many people are, guess what? Homes are selling, right? Then that means that they don't qualify for those exemptions, which I think is something we could probably work together to change. I can tell you that this is a big deal. I mean, right now, I've got people that I can tell you that they're so stressed out because having affordable and safe housing is people's well-being and health. It's not just about affordability, it's about being able to be stress-free and live in a life that people really feel good about. And technically, we pay more taxes. In a little bit of a sense, we do. We pay taxes collectively on the land. So we get a valuation on our land, and all contribute to our lot rents, and we pay that. And we also pay taxes on our homes and our buildings. And some of us don't qualify for exemptions, we pay it. And in return, we don't get the same services as other taxpayers. We don't get plowing, you don't repair our roadways or our infrastructure, thank you for the grant, but other than that, we don't get, we also don't get regular police services, they don't monitor private property. So in return, we really should be seeing a lower valuation. I fight hard for the people in my community to make sure that they have a place to live that's safe. It's something I'm super passionate about. I'm passionate about all the manufactured housing owners in our town, and I'm hoping to really change some of the language around how we support it. And this midterm assessment, guys, come on, we're in a time right now, everything is selling for hotcakes. And guess what? Owning a home is something that gets people out of poverty. So these people that are selling their homes are walking away with some money in their pocket, getting them out of this generational poverty, that they're able to move on somewhere else. And I don't think that my neighbors who are struggling beside me should be paying a higher tax rate because these people are actually able to walk away with something. I'm like, I see people selling their homes, like, oh, my goodness, this is great. I had one guy moving back to be near his kids. He couldn't believe what he got for his house. He was excited. And at the same time, I'm excited because people want to come live in my community because they know it's affordable and secure, right? They're like, this is where the rents are stable, I want to be here. So, you know, again, I see the need, I'm all about fair taxation, but I also want to be treated as equal. So if this is something you guys want to do, I want to have more conversation about the services that we're getting in exchange for our money. And I also want to start thinking together, like, how can we give some benefits to the people that are struggling with water bills and maybe paying their taxes? You know, we've had two people recently come in, and they're disabled. One is a custodial grandparent of her, and, you know, she's not going to qualify for tax exemptions for years. But, you know, we want to make sure that she's successful living in our community. We want people to be able to stay in these homes. Because guess what happens if they can't? Where are they going to come? They're going to come look for a subsidized housing situation that we don't have any. So just keep in mind that it is a benefit to the town that we're doing what we do to steward our communities. We really have a limited amount of affordable housing in this town. Increasing taxes, 40 bucks may not be a lot to some people in the room, but it is a lot to that person that doesn't know where they're going to get oil this winter, or how they're going to pay those energy bills, or their electric bill that's gone up 60%. I'm really asking you to think about this before you make that decision, because no matter how it seems, you know, I'm willing to trust two years from now, things might look a lot different, we might be having a different conversation. I don't want to think that this is just about mobiles, because it's not. It's about homes, and these people are living on the edge of really hard times. So I'm hoping that you'll take that under consideration, and I'm hoping to see more of you guys in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Very well said, and I appreciate the passion that you have for your community and for those that live in your community. And I know they appreciate that. I appreciate you coming and speaking with us tonight, and we will work with you in the future. And I'll pledge to hopefully see you more, too.
Great, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Any further comment from the board?
I'd just like to respond to your comments about the affordable housing. I really appreciate your explanation of it. And I just wanted to let you know that when the state looks at affordability in communities, that Exeter is counted as providing an adequate amount of affordable housing because of the number of manufactured housing units that we have. And yet, people can't find a place to live. It's very frustrating. And I appreciate the work you're doing with your community, and I love that you got to become a condo association or a cooperative business because that really spreads it all out. So, thank you.
Any other comment?
I just, I don't know, I'm having trouble with this, just with overall. I mean, we all have to make sure the taxes are up to date and within the range and all of that. But I just think the timing right now is a little off.
Well, there's a housing bubble.
Right.
That's where I was going with this. And it's still going. So where people are excited that their value of their houses is going up, and their taxes are going up, too, and it's this balance. So anyway, do we, what, we don't tax mobile homes at the same, how do we tax mobile homes compared to somebody that owns a house on a piece of land?
Well, we will.
Same? In a park? It's not, right?
It's all based on valuation. So we would, we would tax the land if that's the situation in the co-op.
Right. But like she said, they don't get the service that everyone else gets. That's the part I'm struggling with.
I'm stuck with that, too.
Okay.
You are, too?
I'm stuck with that.
Yeah.
I know Mr. Marsh has stood up on that comment, so he might have a better answer.
Yeah, all the properties are assessed at the same tax rate, and it all goes back to the value of the property. If we're talking about the co-op, the land that they own, that is one value, the individual structures are another value. Because they're not owned together like a house with a piece of land, they are two separate ones. So they each get their own bill based on what they could sell for. So they are being treated the same as a house, just in two pieces.
And I understand that. My concern is that by doing that, they don't have the same service that everyone else in town has because I'm not going to have to repeat everything she just said, she was very eloquent.
You are correct.
I have a little bit of an issue with that. And how can we kind of look into that a little bit more? Is that something we can look into a little bit more and see if there's something we can do to do something, a rate a little bit different for, but there are condos that are the same way, right? Homeowners' associations, things?
We don't have different tax rates for different.
I know, I'm trying to get this out.
Properties, but a uniform tax rate, so the same rate is going to apply to.
So we can't do anything about a mobile home park, for example, who doesn't have the same benefits that everyone else has? They're being taxed the same, but they don't, who does your trash?
So we do get town.
Okay, thank you. But they, so they don't get plowing, they don't, right?
So condos would get, I mean, if you have, condos would get police presence, condos would get infrastructure repairs of the roadways, condos would get plowing.
Right.
Unless they were, you know, unusual circum, I'm thinking of some of the.
Yeah, I'm not aware that police don't respond to.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the.
Oh, I'm sure police would respond, but to her point, there's no presence. You know what I'm saying? There's a difference. I mean, police will, of course, they're going to respond.
John, if you want to go up, just go up to the podium.
I could just make one comment on that. The condo.
Just state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, John Gruder, Three Sterling Hill Lane.
Thank you.
Condominiums normally, and I think the mobile home parks, have private roads, so they probably don't get snowplowing. But we get police and fire protection. And I think the value of the land that our buildings and property sits on is usually divided, and your tax reflects that, the tax bill.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think what her point about the police are, that they don't just go on private property and patrol like they would the street I live on.
Correct.
That was just, I think, where she was going with that. But I appreciate what you said about the overall.
This is a similar question that has come up at the state from people that live on private roads. It's, the bills that have come before us have been a little different, and they haven't actually dealt with cooperative manufactured housing parks. It's been individual homes on a private road, or homeowners' association that made its own road, and they pay the homeowners' fees to keeping that care, but say the same thing, that they don't get the town services, so they shouldn't be taxed at the same, or it should affect their valuation. And I'll tell you, that just hasn't gone anywhere. Because what I've heard from people in the committee rooms is that the people that in these places on private roads use the rest of the roads. So the argument is that it's, you know, it's like my driveway, I get taxed on having a driveway. And I, but I get, and I get all the services. So I'll tell you, at the state level, it hasn't been solved.
Okay. So let me make sure I understand this. By law, right now, we have to, there's a valuation and a range that we're supposed to be within, correct?
Yeah, well, every fifth year, the town has to be at within the 90 to 110%.
And if we're not.
Right. If you're not, then the state would make you do it at that point in time. These in-between years, the state is not going to order us to do anything specific. It just was a trend that we were noticing, and then we did the analysis, and now we're presenting our results to you to decide whether you want to make those adjustments to bring those properties that are out of line with the town's overall average more in line with them. You know, I understand completely, inflation, we're having these issues in other towns where we're updating assessments as well. And it's, you know, she was the board that ultimately has the decision on whether you make these adjustments. But everybody who's not paying their fair share means everybody else has to pay a different than what they should be paying as well. So that's part of the hard part that we're all dealing with.
It is very hard.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and I have another question. So if we don't, when, when is the next reevaluation date where we would have to be, like, the five-year date?
2023, right? We did it in 19, four, 2024, I'm sorry.
So, and if we delayed this, depending on how the market is.
Correct.
The valuations could go up even more. Or they could go down.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we don't know what the market is. I mean, the thing is, if they're out of line, and they stay out of line, if the market stays the way it is, then you're going to see a much larger increase at that point in time than the rest of the town is going to see. So at some point, there's going to be.
And that's a harder hit. When you're, I'm just saying, that that's, we struggled with that over our water.
Right, I know.
Because we did it incrementally, so that it wasn't literally this high.
Well, right. And that was my initial thought of like, I would, you know, because I know we're going to have to do the reevaluation at some point at the five-year mark. So if this is a buttress against a huge amount, but I understand your point entirely, like, there is, this is a huge sort of top of the market, or maybe we're kind of cresting over it, but we don't know.
No.
Everyone's crystal ball.
I know, right.
Mine broke a long time ago. Yeah.
I think I just want to add one more thing, because my husband just nudged me to remind me. And in the cooperative communities anyhow, I want you to remember that we can't sell our community for profit. I want to say that. And that's the thing, I think the valuations go up, but like, we are permanently a not-for-profit cooperative, we're limited equity that people buy in low. And to me, that's the biggest value, because that says, at no time can one of these investor owners come and swipe us up and redevelop the land for condos. And so we don't, so the value on the land is like, it's theoretical, because literally, we can't sell it, right? So we're, it's the homes that are increasing in value for now, and I agree, it's a housing bubble. And I'm telling you what I'm starting to see, because I've got folks with homes for sale in my community, we're starting to see a slowdown. And we're, you know, interest rates are going up. And what does that tell you? I'm not an economist either, but something's about to happen. And I think the, the timing's bad because of everything else. If it wasn't, you know, and if this was just a normal, like, okay, let's think about this. But things aren't low right now. Things, everything is, the cost of food, the cost of, I mean, $550 to put 100 gallons of oil in somebody's tank right now. So I mean, like I said, this is just.
No, and your point is really well taken. And I do think that there, like, if, if there was an argument to be made about an evaluation that was slightly different than the rest of the taxes, would be because it is a cooperative. So there is only so much that you can sell the land for, because it's still going to be, like, you still have to take into account all of your neighbors. Like, if I sold my house, it wouldn't need to consult Dan, you know, next door to see. But I think, I mean, I think that that is a really interesting point, and I, I know, I feel really conflicted, and thank you for your presentation, because it is, you know, it is, it's true. And I think that we are a really economically diverse community in ways that people don't necessarily see. And it's thanks to, you know, cooperatives and mobile homes and things like this, which is, you know, so much of an appeal. But also, how do we figure out what's fair? Because the, you know, I worry about the bump in three years, or two years, if we're, you know, if we're putting it off. But then I worry about the bump now. I mean, inflation is real, it's painful.
Yeah. And maybe everything else will minimize by then. That's my hope. It's, and literally, like I said, I mean, I tell people I live in Exeter, and they go, ooh. And I say, you have no idea. Like, I can, we can, I'm proud to live in Exeter. I love that, I lived here as a kid, I went to school with Russ. I love this town. I love that I could come back here and buy a home affordably. And you know, it's, it's like the best-kept secret, right? Like, I have a home, I invest in it well, and it's maintained its equity. And literally, the fact that people can walk away is a beautiful thing. Like, they're making a little bit of money. Like, that's, and again, that could go away.
That could go away.
That could go away.
I would, not to drag you back again, but I, I really don't want to vote on this tonight. I need to give some serious thought to this. Everyone else can, I can.
I was going to ask.
I'm just not ready to.
Selectwoman Ratriolif, do you have any thoughts or anything to comment?
No, nothing to comment right now, just listening.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if we don't want to vote on that this tonight, I am fine with that. I.
There are, we talked a lot about manufactured housing, but there's also the condominium element as well.
No, I understand. I'd like to just stick with, I mean, now, when you say you don't want to vote tonight, do you, are you, do you want to revisit this in the short term? Or do you want to move this ahead, maybe not to 2024, but, or do you just?
I have, I have to do some, this, a lot of new information tonight, and I don't want to feel rushed into making a decision. And I would, right now, I have to be honest. There were too many things that you pointed, and I knew some of this stuff, but there were some of the other things that she said I really hadn't considered. I knew about them, but I hadn't considered them until now. And I just think if this is more of a discussion than a simple, yeah, we need to, to do this. I don't know. I have to start, I have to do a little research for myself and see what options are out there.
Understood. Mr. Dean, is there any deadline on this? I didn't see there was any.
Not that I'm aware of.
There is no hard, fast deadline. The only thing that would occur is if we decide we're going to do this in two weeks from now, or it would probably push out when you could get your MS-1 in, because we'd have to wait for after we meet with whoever wants to come meet with us and make any of those small valuation changes. But there's not like an immediate deadline that has to be done at this point in time.
It's a good point by Mr. Marsh, though. He points out that the MS-1 is due when it's due, and so we wouldn't.
September 1st is when.
It's technically due September 1st. We've pushed it off a few weeks in the past.
And how much time do we leave for property owners to come in and review their?
We were sending out letters, giving them two weeks to schedule a call, and then having, you know, meet with how many came in. If I may, there is possibly another option, Janet, I spoke about. If, you know, if you wanted to, we could wait and maybe look at this again in the spring time. That would give homeowners a much longer period of time to be dealing with any change in their, you know, in their taxes. It'd have them, instead of getting it all in the second bill, we could get it into both bills, which would give them a longer period of time to deal with any increase in their taxes. taxes. Just a thought I've had the other day because I agree wholeheartedly, it's a bad time, inflation, everything going on, but statutorily I have to present.
I understand.
You know, the information. And the only other part on the manufactured and the co-ops, we're not touching the land assessments. This only deals with the homes themselves and it's based off what people are buying and selling them at, at this point, up to this point in time.
Would the board be more comfortable in revisiting this in the spring?
Yeah.
I think I would be.
I would. I, I, I really think we need.
Thank you. Select woman, Ratriolif agrees.
If I could ask you a question, in, in the packet report, I saw the valuation of the co-op itself increased. So I, I just wanted to clarify why.
I think that was, that's the cumulative of all the manufactured homes in.
Looks pretty accurate to my current assessment, our current assessment.
This sheet you were talking about here?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the prior, these are all of your manufactured.
So, right. So this is the current assessment and.
And this is what they would revise to, no, this has nothing to do with the land.
So the tax landowner bill would not increase?
No, change at all, just the manufactured homes.
And, and again, my point still stands, I just want to say, before you decide to move this ahead, just remember that the stress of this is a lot for people and folks in my community know about it and they're like, people, again, money is a big thing right now for people living on fixed incomes. I just want to remind you, and I understand you wanted to do more research, I think we should do more research to see how we get these tax bills even, or, or we adjust because at the end of the day, I think people are all out there going, oh my God, did you see this? The town wants to increase our tax bills, so.
Yeah, I think with the budget, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, when the budget process starts, which is this week, we start talking about the, what's not deductions, I'm sorry, the.
Exemptions.
Exemptions that we have, and we have some pretty generous ones, but as you pointed out, they're not going to affect you. And ours are, they're in the millions, right?
Yes.
About three?
Yes. We, depending upon which exemption program you're talking about, it's, it's a different, it ranges from 30 million to 30, 32 million.
Yeah, so thank you. I just think that we, I would like to look into this a little bit more in depth, maybe have a work session even on it if, if everyone is agreeable to do so.
Yep. So, Mr. Dean, I think that consensuses will push this to the spring?
Okay.
Okay.
And I have one more.
Please.
Question. When we're valuing, doing a valuation, we're looking at the home sales and, you know, within our community and, or business sales, what, what have you. But the types of assessment, you know, is it a colonial, is it a, you know, antique or whatever, is it a manufactured home? Are those assessments set, like, is there, does the state have anything to do with how we choose that? Okay.
Now, the state doesn't have any, the only one that they do is the current used properties. That's where you have to special in it.
Yeah.
As far as the building assessments, no, it's supposed to go back to market value with your relationship, equalization.
Okay.
They don't come in and say, you know, it should be $20 a foot or any of that. No, it's, because every town's a little bit different on.
Right, right.
On the market, per se.
Thank you.
It's funny that you brought up one more question that I had is, why manufact, I know that their rates seem higher, but everybody's houses are selling for more. And my question is, so if you create more tax revenue that's projected towards a budget to call it fair, where's it going? Like, so I get it, value, more money coming in, the tax rate's going to stay the same, but you're generating more revenue and I would like to know why.
There is no more revenue generated. The town can only vote, can only raise what the US vote to spend.
Okay.
What happens is a shift.
It would be, it would be adjusted.
And some other people will pay a little bit less.
Yeah. So are you telling me that sick built homes aren't selling at an astronomical rate themselves?
They are, and that's why they're at the 68% right now, where some manufactured homes we have are actually down into the 30 and 40%. Because their price is so low, $20,000, it sells for 40, that's an assessment ratio of 50%.
And we don't own the land.
I understand, but it's based on what people are buying and selling them for. So that's where we're getting our.
And, and another part of it, my husband says, so recently in our community too, we've had the opportunity to be good stewards, and we've upgraded some homes, so we've also put some brand new homes in for folks to make a better quality place to live, and those have sold at a very fair, at a very nice price, which is great because it's funny, we've taken and invested back into our community. So it's, it's really like, it's some, it's somewhat an illusion, but again, we're not selling, we're trying not to sell these homes that are going to cause people to have to come to the town to get help to fix them. We're trying to put something better in that's going to give them a 40 to 80 year lifespan. So again, I, I think some of what we're seeing, there's somebody else in town from Concord that's going around to all the communities and if he finds vacant lots, he's putting homes in there that are brand new to sell. So I think we're seeing a lot of those sales trends as well.
Thank you.
We're also seeing investors, part of the reason that this bubble hit around here, well, in the state anyway, is that investors are coming in and buying the property to, yeah, either flip it or, uh, one of the things that dealing with the state is the short-term rentals. And people are buying houses to just rent them out on two weeks at a time. And there's a lot more of that happening in Exeter than people realize. And so that takes those, those, those places off the rental, rentable market, off the affordability market, they're just.
The whole value of the co-op, we never have to worry about that.
Mr. Marsh, did you want to, you had a second memo here to speak to in the condominiums?
Sure. Basically, we've done the same process with the residential condominiums. In there, you'll see that their ratio overall wasn't that far out of line with the town's overall average, but when we looked in depth, we found some projects that were above and some projects that were below. So again, in fairness, that's why you see some of the adjustments we were recommending would actually increase and some would be decreased to bring those again back in line. And again, once we made those projected adjustments, the overall indications showed that equity got better and it still remained, you know, in line with the town's overall average.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Marsh? Any public comment with respect to the condominium assessment?
I mean, this feels a little bit less prescient in terms of we need to deal with this right away.
Mm-hmm.
And I think if we're putting off one discussion to the spring, we should put the other off to the spring because we might have a lot more data about where the, where the bubble is, where inflation is and all of that.
Yeah.
I think that would be fair.
I agree.
Any objections from the board to putting the residential condominium property review on hold until the spring?
No.
No.
Okay, Mr. Dean? We'll put those both off, spring. Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you very much.
Janet.
Can I make a suggestion?
Thank you.
Can we maybe call the manufactured homes next report instead of mobile?
Yeah, I did put me in fact in here.
Yeah. It's okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, next on our discussion items, we have an update from the assistant town manager, Melissa Roy, who is going to review and summarize where we are with ARPA funds. Recall that there are two installments of ARPA funds, the second of which I believe we just received and must be spent by 2024. I know the board has already reviewed and approved spending on some of the funds already. I thought it would have, it would be a good idea, ask Melissa to come before us this evening because we've seen them piecemeal, but we haven't looked at it as a whole. And I thought it would be a good idea for the board to see what we've spent on what and what we have left and maybe Melissa, a projection of what you're looking at.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As the chair said, that we received two tranches of money and $800, excuse me, $800,000 pockets. We just received the other one, the second one last week. So we have at this point received our full $1.6 million, which was assessed to us by the federal government. You can see in the spreadsheet here, you guys have, you have approved various projects at various amounts for various reasons. There are a few that I'm going to have you officially approve today. We've spoken about them, a lot of our IT things, but we, in going back, weren't sure if we had an official vote. So some of these, you may say, well, I thought we already did that, but we really wanted to make sure we were crystal clear and had, had the appropriate votes. So the first project that you folks approved on January 3rd was Winter Street BMP project, and that was a DPW project, and that was a $42,586,000, excuse me, dollar project. You approved $185,000 for Pickpocket Dam. Pickpocket Dam, the total project cost, I believe, is in the $300,000, but due to another grant and some other funding, the final amount to the town was 185,000. You guys approved that on June 27th of this year. We've had discussions about the Squam Scott Sewer River Sew, Squam Scott River Sewer Siphon Project. You approved $420,000 on March 14th of 2022, and that is the second part of the project where we need to directionally drill a third barrel underneath the river. We have received significant funding for that project. We've received, we will be receiving $600,000 in congressional directed spending, which came from support from Congressman Pappas's office. We received some money from our SRF program previously. We are also receiving $1.2 million from this state ARPA money in FY22, as well as, excuse me, 180,000. So that's that project. We have, the last select board meeting, we had a reclassification study approved, which looked at our, our non-union and SEIU town employees to see where we're at due to retention and recruitment purposes. You approved an update to our GIS and maps online on, as well at the 627 meeting. And then the, the rest of these are either items that we've spoken about or items that we're presenting today. In last year's budget process, the discussion of the Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit came up as part of the mitigation to the Great Bay. There was $99,600 presented by the DPW in order to continue to mitigate our nitrogen in Great Bay. It was presented at that time that that funding be used through ARPA funding, and we would be looking for a formalized vote for that this evening. Town server equipment and support, Aristotle Insight, ASCAP, backup servers, PC replacement, all were discussed, and I'm happy to answer whatever question because I know there's a lot of different things here, were all discussed in last year's budget process as instead of going into the general operating budget, we'd like to pay from them out of ARPA. And that was a discussion that we had with you folks, but again, we're looking for the formalized vote for that this evening. A new project that we're bringing to you tonight, which is a memo further in the packet, is this Munis Transition Team Funding. Munis is the software that the finance and the HR departments use for our payroll and HR support systems. It's, was put in place in 2017 and has not received a formal upgrade. At this point, Munis is requiring that we upgrade to the 2021 version, which our, our system will go into a test environment in August and we will go live in March. It's a pretty cumbersome process and the finance director and I have spoken with the Munis software teams, and there's the opportunity for us to purchase a sort of a transition package to help us foster that program where they're, work with us as a project manager. So we're requesting $6,400 to be paid out of ARPA funds to help us with that transition. And then the rest of the list are just potential ideas. We've talked to various department heads and this list will probably continue to ebb and flow as people have ideas in which we start to vet out, bring to you folks or have other discussions. We will have after this evening, if all is approved, $736,374 left in ARPA funding to continue to, to delegate to other various town projects or services. It's a very quick, sorry, very brief presentation.
So the 736 and change.
Yep.
Is not inclusive of what you're asking for this evening, correct?
So, excuse me, I'm just, right. Yep. Um, hold on.
And then I have a follow-up for you.
No, that's okay. Um, excuse me, so, I apologize. That is what has been, um, so the $99,600 is for the Great Bay.
Yep.
Plus the People GIS, the reclassification, Squam Scott, Pickpocket and what, and Winter Street, excuse me, equals the 736.
Okay, so not.
Sorry about that.
Town server equipment, okay.
Yep, sorry about that.
So I, I guess in my follow-up, I mean, I'm.
Sure.
I'm not opposed to, I mean, I think everything that you've listed here that you're looking for in approval this evening, particularly with the Munis, and I mean, that, that's one, I mean, I can remember my first year on the Budget Recommendations Committee in 2016. I mean, this Munis system has driven us crazy since then. And I know every year during budget season.
Every year.
We have this huge debate, whether it was the BRC then, when I was on it, or even now, watching as a select board member. I understand that when, you know, when you have a system like this, there are always going to be upgrades, but it just seems that annually, we're spending an awful lot of money. But I get it, it's part of doing business and, and you need this. I guess what I'm opposed to is when I, and this is purely my opinion, when I'm looking at ARPA funds and knowing that we were getting two installments of $800,000 to be spent by 2024, I mean, this is all money that eventually down the road, whether it's us or our kids, they're going to be paying for this.
Yes.
So I envisioned ARPA funds being used for something in 10 or 15 years, we can point and say, this is what we spent the money on. So I'm looking at some of your potentials.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's more along the line of, you know, you're making an improvement to something that exists that the town uses, you're improving infrastructure, I mean, you know, some of the early money we approved was for infrastructure.
Yep.
And I think those are the, those are the needs that we should be looking at to spend this once in a lifetime money that we will end up paying back at some point.
Yeah.
So I guess I would just, I would direct the question maybe to the town manager. I mean, other than the Great Bay nitrogen, when you're looking at the, the server, I mean, the servers, you know, that's significant money, but the others, I mean, we, we can't find money in the budget for that?
Well, one of the answers to the question is, we, when we went through the budget process for FY22, we talked about the IT needs that were identified at that time. And at that time, it was, it was agreed to reduce the budget and submit those IT needs through ARPA. So that was the genesis of that, that's where it comes from. As far as, you know, other things that are on the list, I think that we still haven't gotten to that point where we're sitting down and saying, okay, here's how we're going to commit the rest of these funds. I know Bob Hall and I have had conversations about the train station as an example, and I know Mr. Hall's going to be here in two weeks to talk to you about some ideas regarding that. And that may fit more in line with what you're thinking about in terms of the, the spend. So that's what I'd say about it so far.
Well, no, I, I, I'm not saying no to that, but I'm saying when I'm envisioning, you know, the ARPA funding, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted this tonight, because we've seen all this piecemeal.
Mm-hmm.
And individually, it all sounds good.
Right.
But you want to keep track of, you know, this significant amount of money that's, that's been, that's been handed to us.
And clearly, the $420,000 for the siphon, because that project was a surprise, it is our ability to try to not put that onto the taxpayers. Unfortunately, it's not a pretty thing, you know? When we talk about saying what we've used this for in the future, it's, it's pipes underneath the river, but we're looking to, you know, to prohibit a sewer.
I think that falls along with what I think, but I'm looking at, you know, Town Hall HVAC, Tenhampton Road. Tenhampton Road.
Yep.
You know, anything that you could point to, and I mean, not that the IT stuff isn't important, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
I just...
I would say that one of the things that, when ARPA was, was put out to the communities, one of the things was COVID mitigation. And when we look at these IT upgrades, a lot of these were to support us and continue to support us in being, whether that's remote or Zoom, or the, the infrastructure to support some of these things that our residents needed during COVID or are going to continue to need. I think that the community has enjoyed the ability to remote in, as Lovey's doing in. Some of that is infrastructure improvements, where we now need to have penetration testing to our system and, and that kind of stuff, because we just have more capabilities because of COVID. So with ARPA, it was capital improvement, infrastructure, but it was also getting us ready to be outside the town offices, and I think that's some of what the IT requests are supporting.
No, and that's, that's fair, but I look at some of the others that, you know, like PC replacement, you know, even the Munis, and I know, I know it's needed.
Yeah.
But those are things that prior to the pandemic, we're putting into the budget.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I wish I had my notes from last year's budget. I, I'm gonna have to try to go by memory here.
Yep.
And, and I know we supported all of these things as a subcommittee when, when it came to IT, but for example, replacing those computers. There was money in the budget to replace the computers, but the computers weren't available to replace, right, to purchase.
Right.
So that money was put to help support the COVID needs, the IT. So there was money there that was used. I, I don't have the specifics because I don't have my notes in front of me. But what is the ASCAP again?
So that's the penetration testing, essentially, where we hire a contractor to try to break into the system.
I remember Aristotle was there. So, yeah, I, I have to say, other than Great Bay and some, I just would like to see some of this back in the budget.
So I will direct to Russ, because these were discussions that we had during the budget process that we would put in through ARPA. We did, you can go back and look in the notes, and, and it was presented as the general budget with these things pulled out for ARPA. Tonight was formalizing those discussions, and that, that's not to say that, you know, your opinions are your, whatever you'd like to do, but these were sort of follow-up discussions.
I also can't remember, maybe you can refresh my memory. There was, during the budget process last year, we were waiting for updates on what would be covered and what weren't, what couldn't be, and I think that was kind of finalized when it went from the Budget Committee
Yeah, that's true.
To this Select Board.
Final rule had not been put in place.
Exactly. And essentially, what happened is, we have such a small amount, it's a lot to us, 1.6 million is, is a lot, but when you're talking about in the Midwest, where they got millions and millions and millions of dollars, our number was so much smaller that the federal government said, under a certain amount, you can use your entire amount, your entire allocation towards government services, which is all of these items. At the time, we were going through the budget process, we weren't sure if that was going to happen, and that, I believe there was a percentage at the time we were going through, they expected only a certain percentage to cover, cover that, and now it's all of the 1.6. That doesn't mean it can't be used for infrastructure or any of the needs like we have on this list. We just have the opportunity now to use the 1.6 for government services, the entire amount now.
So, if I understand correctly, some of these things were put in the budget for 2022?
They weren't put in the budget, they were proposed during the budget process
That's what I meant, yeah.
and not officially put in, just so, just so we know.
They were proposed and then removed through the budget process.
Yeah.
It didn't take away the need for these things.
Exactly. There were discussions through Russ, Budget, and I believe through, through you guys, when I went back and looked at all the minute, meeting minutes and watched the videos, that the assumption was that although these things are still necessary, that we had this opportunity to pay for them out of this different pot of money.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking at, is I, I, I understand what you're saying about it being more infrastructure, you know, we have federal dollars, look what we got to do with it, and, and maybe make it more visible. But if these are requested items that we put off because we wanted to decrease the budget, and, and then those items became more necessary because of going through the pandemic, I, I don't, you know, looking for $1,500 somewhere else, okay, but if we have it here, and, and it doesn't have to be pandemic-related, it's just for governmental use, I, I would, frankly, I'm, I'm gonna go with the ones that are recommended for tonight, and then the, the ideas down below, I questioned some of them, so...
And just so we're clear, those are, it's like a brainstorming session. Nothing is formalized. We talked about, you know, letting you folks know what some of the ideas that had been brought to us. Those are all going to need to be vetted, brought to you, you know, there's a process. Just because it's on this list doesn't mean that it's, it's going to be requested.
That's understood, but, and I didn't say that I agreed with what's on the list, but that's along the lines of what, you know, I was thinking of ARPA funds, and I, and I understand where, you know, if we were to vote on this, we're using the money correctly, properly.
Yep.
And I understand, you know, I agree with Selectwoman Gilman, there are certain things that we needed to upgrade because of the pandemic, particularly Zoom, and, and other such things to be able to run meetings and have the community see our meetings. But, and I'm just, and I'm not going to harp on the Munis thing, but that's, it's, that's annual, and that's annually in the budget. So I'm not going to get caught up on that because
No, that's fine.
It's, it is
It is, it is.
It's not a lot of money, but I would just say that my expectation for the remainder of the money, which by the way, doesn't need to be spent right away.
No, we have
We've got some time.
2024 to
I'd really like to see us be a little bit more thoughtful, and not just look for a quick fix, oh, well, that, that's one way we can pay for something, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Any other thoughts?
No, I really would kind of like a, I don't know how to make a master plan of everything that everyone needs in their departments, but I think going with something that, you know, a physical improvement, you know, as you said, something that you can look at and say, we were able to do this because
Right.
we qualified and we did this for you. You know, all the Town Hall things listed on here should be one project. It really should be a coordinated effort, not a piecemeal thing.
And that's not to say that any of the money's used for town, but I'm just saying, something that you can say, you know...
Right. But I don't know the solution, I don't know if the, the solution is to get a department head meeting going to talk about these things and then bring that discussion to us. It's, it's like the capital improvement plan.
Right.
You know, just give
Well, I'm sure to some degree, that's already been done, because I know when the congressional spend, direct spending became available back in 2021, you were the interim Town Manager, and I remember you hustling all the department heads for projects because you had a deadline of like, what?
Two weeks.
Three hours, but anyway, so I mean, I know it's been done to some degree.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we talked about having a work session of the board, if you wanted to get into a deeper dive on some of these items. We're trying to come up with ideas that are reflective of our boards and committees as well. I know we have an Active Arts and Culture Commission, they're very interested in doing some things with the Town Hall. So that would be where that, you know, those ideas have been germinating, as far as that, that goes, so...
Or the Energy Committee, I mean, they may have some thoughts.
I think that's
And the Facilities Committee?
Facilities Committee.
I would say yes.
Okay.
We, we could bring these items to their attention and see if they have ideas.
Okay. So I think that's the consensus of the board on that, but moving, moving forward on the requests tonight, you're looking for a motion, Mr. Dean, for one, two, three, four, seven items, and Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last one is the next discussion item, which you've already explained.
It is, yes.
So we can wrap that up with this.
If, if that's okay with you folks, yes.
If, if there's no opposition or further discussion, then I would entertain, is there any further discussion?
No, I'm sorry, I was looking, reading my notes from Budget, sorry about that.
Just go forward. Selectwoman Gilman, are you?
I'm okay.
I think Lovey just came off mute.
Oh, hi, Selectwoman Ratriolov?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for you to vote.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve expenditures from the ARPA funds for the following: Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit in the amount of $99,600; Town Sewer Equipment and Support Purchases in the amount of $52,800; Aristotle Insight for IT in the amount of $14,200; the ASCAP for IT, that's A-S-C-A-P, in the amount of $390; the Backup DNS Server for IT in the amount of $1,500; PC Replacement for IT in the amount of $6,350; and lastly, the Munis Transition Team Funding, as explained by Assistant Town Manager Roy, for HR and Finance in the amount of $6,400.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Ratriolov?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
And our last discussion item this evening is a discussion on the water and sewer rates. Mr. Dean and I had a meeting in his office several weeks ago, and Selectwoman Cowan, I know you've had some discussion with folks, and we wanted to take an opportunity to discuss the water sewer rates, which the most recent went into effect July 30th of 2021. So, Mr. Dean, I'll turn this over to you.
Sure. So the real question is, we've had our water sewer rate model in, in place now for several years, and we've been working off a tiered system with a fixed service fee for both water and sewer. And the question now comes back to, do we want to do the same, you know, continue along the same lines? Are you interested in having another rate study to look at different ways that we might go about the water sewer rates and the structure? And I did include in the packet the, the last rate study that was done, and it's dated November 28th, 2016. So that's really where we're at, where we need to make a decision about, are we ready to do a deep dive into this, or is it a tweaking? And I think regarding a rate study, I think we definitely want to look at engaging, depending on how far you go, engaging a consultant to look at specific things on this, and I think that that's how we would look to do this.
I agree, and before we discuss it, I'm going to fast forward to a question. How soon could a consultant do the study? And regardless of the timeline, would we have funds in the water and sewer budget to pay for the study currently?
We would probably get a proposal from a consultant, then bring it back to the board, and I'm anticipating that we would split it equally between the water and sewer reserves, and that's how we would fund this. So I think, I, I'm thinking on order magnitude, 35,000 to 45,000, if we really want to, again, get into the level of detail that we got into in the last study, to try to make it worth our while. And I think it's hard to say how long it would take, but I think you could conservatively estimate probably 90 to 120 days to look at the, the whole, the whole shooting match, so to speak.
Before the board deliberates, any member of the public wish to speak to us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, John Gruder, Three Sterling Hill Lane. I've been to Water and Sewer Committee on this, and I talked with Mr. Dean. Vice Chair has heard my speech before on this, but I am on the Board of Directors of Sterling Hill, and we are very conscious about the amount of water we use. In fact, we probably use about half what the average homeowner uses. And I didn't realize we were getting a report from our, our Water Committee, who volunteered to fix things like toilet flappers, a drippy faucet. We put all new low-flow air raiders on, done everything we can, and marked everyone shut off so that if something happens, a tank leaks, we're not going to waste water because that thing's going to go off pretty quick. So in the process of their report, I, for the first time, even though I've been on the board for a few years, I've not been the treasurer, and I don't sign any checks, but I realized that there were three tiers of water rates. And I've been familiar with water rates in other jurisdictions, in Florida and up here, that were just the same rate for everyone. So, and where the, the problem comes in for a condominium and probably a manufactured home, as I learned tonight, is that we have four buildings, 32 units each, one meter per building. So we have one meter, which, according to the water study that Mr. Dean referenced, the 2016 study, the meter charge is just to cover the administration, administrative and billing costs for that meter. Okay? It's not a profit center, the profit's in the water. But because we group 32 units, even though our average is about 67 gallons a day, we end up in the third tier by the end of the quarter. Doesn't seem fair, we're not using any more water. I learned tonight that 20% maybe of the town is, is some, at some point or other, delinquent. I don't believe in the 15 years we've been around, we've been delinquent on one bill. Never asked for any abatement or anything on that. And it just seems like we're getting shortchanged because of the system. I don't, in my mind, I don't know whether we need to do a whole rate study. I think we know how much money we need to raise for water and sewer, and instead of dividing it in three tiers, just have the same rate across the board. We'd go down a little, the single families might go up, but we'd go up a little, I'm sure, and, but it would be equitable across the board, whether you live in a condo, an apartment, or a single-family home. I understand why there might be a tiered system in commercial use, you know, to really encourage them. We've done everything, we've encouraged everyone, we've done anything, everything we can do to save water, but we still get penalized. So that's what I'd like to look at. And if there's anything I can do on that, I would be happy to work on that with the town.
So can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Just because I was unfamiliar with, with something you said. What would be the financial liability for each of your 32 units if you went, and I don't even know if this was possible, but if it were, what would be the financial liability for each unit to have its own meter?
We would have to, whatever the cost of putting that meter in.
Okay.
And then they would have a meter charge, I guess.
The service charge?
You'd have more administrative, administrative costs, because you'd be billing and collecting instead of four bills, 128 bills. So I don't know whether that makes any sense.
It would mean that the service charges
Well, the service charge would, no, I was just thinking of, you know, if you're using significantly less water than your neighbor, but I understand that.
In, in that study, the water and sewer service charges are calculated so they recover their individual administrative and billing operation expenses. So it's not like I said, where you're making an extra 10 bucks, or at least that's what this tells me.
Yeah.
You know, they haven't, so it really shouldn't make a difference.
Right.
And you're, you're doing a lot more, a lot less administrative work if you're sending us one bill per building, and, and we're just one condo association. Sterling Hill, too, has 100, 120 units, there's apartment buildings around town, the Ginberg Properties and other condos are in the same boat.
And presumably, Mr. Dean's same at Riverwoods?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. I talked to one of, one of the owners over there, so I think they're in there, so I think everyone in the same boat, a multifamily.
And it's, I think it's helpful, too, to have the background, because there was a time when we charged different fees for different meter sizes, and that was back prior to 2006, and we, we adjusted our system so that we charged based upon, the more you use, the more you pay. And that was the basis for going forward with the, the system that we have in place now. What was decided was to do away with graduated service fees based upon meter size, and basically charge everyone the same for a service fee, no, no matter what. And so this is, this is a, a figment of our system where people have this master meter, and so they're, they're going in our current system, they're going up to the Tier 2 or Tier 3 based on consumption. And it's been brought up in the past a couple of different times, but we've never really honed in on, I would say, the different entities in our system, but we certainly have more than one master meter out there. So it was sort of a So it was sort of a trade-off, where people would pay the one service fee across the board, no matter whether you had a residential meter or a larger meter, two-inch meter or three-inch meter, you would pay the same. Any way you slice it, if we take our system and we do something different with it, the residential rate pays the most into the system. That's basically what's going into the system from the average residential user. And if we were going to adopt a flat rate, then there'd be winners and losers. Obviously, our residential rate would go up, and people would end up paying more out-of-pocket for that. And so you'd be talking about the lion's share of the residential base at that point.
But we're the losers now.
I understood. And again, I think that that was something the Water Sewer Committee, back when this system was adopted, debated at length and thought about in terms of how to create the best system for what we needed at the time. So maybe it just deserves a fresh look.
When was that, Mr. Dean, just to refresh our memory?
What's that?
When was that?
It was 2006, 2007.
So, the while, huh? I just think, I mean, I think that our system should be sophisticated enough to determine, like, are these residences? Is this a mobile home? Like, is this a business? So why would we bump them up? If it's a bunch of residences, can't we just keep them at the residential rate?
Well, that's where the different-sized meters came in, is like, an industrial meter was bigger than a residential meter. And I'm going to guess that having one meter for however many units, it's got to be a larger-sized meter.
The only difference in the meter, I mean, the meter cost is $43, so it's not a, it's not a big number we're talking.
No, I know, it's the size, it's the size of the service coming in, that's what...
Two-inch line? I'm not even sure of that. I think it's a two-inch line.
For all of those?
But...
But that's what, how we use it.
I have 32 customers on one meter in one building. It's not a commercial use.
Right.
It's 32 customers, individual customers. Now, we pay you through our condo fees, so that makes it more convenient. You know, we'd collect that money, and I think we don't have a delinquency problem in our condo fees, which means that, you know, you get your money on time, all the time. So I don't think, we're not doing anything different except combining 32 homes and giving you less work to do, there's less billing and less collection issues.
Is this the same for your...
I'm sure it is.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? Do you pay less already?
I'm going to give you a little secret. I'm just kidding. So, again, Jeannie Wright, Exeter-Hampton Co-op, 40 Hampton Road. We actually, years ago, when we did our water upgrade, we had a master meter for our community, and we also had individual household meters. And we would end up paying the difference between the two, and there was always a difference. And we were like, we don't have any water sources, we don't have any buildings. So we actually went ahead and we installed, we had a great relationship with the, we love the town water department, they're great to us, but they upgraded our meters for us, we got rid of the master meter. But with these new water rates, it's challenging, because now every homeowner has these fees. They have the meter fee, they have the flat rate. Like I said, I have to admit that it's my mother-in-law who lives in my community that says she won't take baths anymore, because she's like, I can't take a bath, my water bill, I can't afford it. And it's like, wait. But it's these fees that are just, so I'm happy to hear you guys are studying this. And I also say, I've always had a really hard time with the whole policy that only the ratepayers pay for municipal water, because we all have a benefit to it, right? We go to restaurants, we shop here, there's other, I'm just saying, low-income folks are really struggling to pay these bills. And it's, like I said, what do you do? Do you stop bathing? Do you stop doing your dishes? Do you stop cleaning your house? And I would love to see some type of program that helps folks, other communities manufactured out there, that said, like, I like what you're doing. Like, find your water sources, know where they are, know how to shut it off, know when there's a leak, and deserate the town's great to us. She'll call up and say, hey, somebody out there has a leak, do you have their number? I'm going to call, like, she can see it. But it doesn't help the homeowner who maybe doesn't know how to conserve water. But I would love to see something that would really improve and bring those rates down a little bit, because people are really struggling.
I'm not even, I'm just saying, average the rate out.
Yeah.
And I, by the way, you should let your mother use your tub once a week or something.
Actually, we told her, go ahead and take a bath.
But, so it's just a matter of fantasy in my mind. I would have spoken up five years ago if I had seen the bill, so, and I'm not asking retro. But I think in fantasy to everyone, if the meter itself is not a profit center, it's a matter of, how many gallons do we use in a quarter and divide it, you know? And it's, instead of three rates, it's just one rate.
Yeah, so I have a question in how your condo association works. So you get one water bill for the building?
Yes.
And then within...
We have actually four residential buildings, we get one for our clubhouse as well, that's separate.
I'm going to say, let's talk about one building.
Okay.
You have one meter. Do the condo fees just divide up the master meter number amongst the units?
The condo fees are based on the square footage of the unit. So there's two or three bedrooms. And so, actually, it's like one and a half and two and a half, because one's like an office bedroom, whatever. So it's basically, so the percentage of ownership is a little different, and then we divide that in, you know, for the total. We've come up with an $800,000 budget, everyone's paying a little bit different. There's four different fees.
Okay, thanks.
So the water's in that. We put a line item for water in the budget, $100,000, whatever it is, and then that's paid monthly.
Thanks.
So I think, unless there's objection from the Board, much like our first discussion item, I'd like to have some more information for us to possibly deliberate on this, because I, Mr. Gruder, you bring up some good points. Mr., go ahead.
More deliberation in order to give more, different direction or more direction?
No, I'd like to go ahead, maybe, and ask Mr. Dean to look towards getting a proposal for some sort of a review.
Oh, yeah. I thought you were saying the opposite.
No, I don't want to wait on that. I want to get the information and move forward.
Okay.
Any objections from the Board?
No.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. I mean, the water rate is what it is, right? I mean, we have, we sell 5 million gallons of water or something, it's about 50 million gallons of water. And if it's the same rate for everyone, then it's just divided by the number of gallons. I don't, what are we studying?
I'd like to look at some different options, to your point, why have three tiers?
Yeah.
Can we have one tier? Or just, I'm not looking, the water rate is the water rate, you're right. But I'm looking at options, to your point when you first came up. Is there something, is there a better way we can be doing this? It was set up in 2006, 2007, that was a long time ago.
I set up a system with Penachek Water out of Nashville, but for a condo association in Londonderry. And they've been paying, you know, there's only one rate, and that's the whole town of Londonderry that is serviced. The whole town's not serviced, but the section that is, has same price per gallon for single fare of condos. So I was a little surprised. You know, I first saw the bill, I said, really? And I've worked with a bunch of communities in Florida for a developer, and we never had that issue, so it was kind of new to me. So I think it can be done, so. If I can help, I'd be happy to.
We may recruit you for that. Remember my time on the planning board, John? You were always willing to volunteer.
Mr. Dean already gave me an application for the...
Water Sewer Advisory Committee?
We were just talking about recruiting. John, thank you for stopping by.
I have three already.
I know you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to that end, I would really love to be, I would be really interested in how this can apply to other, the mobile home situation as well, to see, like, how are we, what are the rates for mobile homes? Are there things that we can do for different parks? Is there a difference between a co-op and a traditional, like?
Yeah, I think...
What are our options?
Our water system is actually quite diverse in the way that we have our users set up. So we would need to look at that, you know, again, it's, I'm the guy sort of at the end that says, we've got X amount of dollars that we need to cover, and then we've got to figure out the best way to cover it. So within that, the question is, how much change can you make? And the other thing is, we need to make sure that we're not, I don't want to use the word discrimination, but we want to make sure that we're treating people equitably within the system that is created. And so I know the inverted block rate, when it was adopted several years ago, we consciously adopted that sort of a rate structure, because we wanted to make sure people were conserving. It was basically a more use, the more you use, the more you pay. And again, John brought up the master meter situation, and I think that's something we can look at. But those are just some basic comments as we go forward with this.
Just on that point, the more you use, the more you pay. We can't control it any more than we do. You know, and with 32 people using the water, we'll never get under that third tier. I mean, first tier, second tier, we work our way up to the third tier. I don't know how we'd do that.
Yeah, and I was just, I was just making the point that there's been arguments made about a flat rate, and having everybody pay the same. But there's another philosophy that is rooted in our tier structure. And so, your point's taken, John. I understand what you're saying.
And I understand that where a tier might be used to encourage someone who has complete control, you know, with a commercial, you know, some kind of manufacturing operation or something. All right, thank you.
When we bring this back up, could we invite Mr. Kelly, who is the Chair of the Water and Sewer?
We would not continue this conversation.
Please, because I don't want to, like, paraphrase what he said when I was on there before, but he just has all kinds of background information that I think would be invaluable for us to understand.
Quite honestly, I think he should be involved in this whole process.
Yes, I agree.
Because the work he's done on that committee has been...
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal, invaluable, and his longevity. I mean, I don't think anybody understands the water sewer process.
Yes, I, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to regular business, we have...
Do we need, did we vote for, oh, no, we don't, do we have to vote to...
I think the consensus was to ask Mr. Dean to...
Okay. Just checking, sorry.
So moving on to regular business, we have several tax abatements. Madam Clerk, we'll have to do a roll call, but I think you're going to be able to consolidate.
With the Board's indulgence or consensus, I would like to move the tax abatements all at one time, or in one motion, because they all are occurring on a single property.
Yes.
It's just over a course of years.
No objection.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve tax abatements for the following property, MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 317, and the following amounts and assess years. $710.52 for 2013, $276.97 for 2014, $382.30 for 2015, $422.09 for 2016, $401.35 for 2017, $397.04 for 2018, $714.25 for 2019, and $752.95 for 2020, and $743.23 for 2021.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rantrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next order of business, Mr. Dean, it looks like there's a property tax abatement request due to a ongoing litigation, is that correct?
That is, so this is another situation where we have a writ of possession that's been granted to the park. And so we talked about this at a prior meeting, where we can't tax the park, the taxes have to run with the owner. So this is a, this is a request to forgive those taxes due, as well as the interest. And then a new, our understanding is, a new mobile home will go on top of the, or go onto the property.
Okay. And the total, excuse me, the total forgiveness is $3,633.08, which covers tax year 2018 through 2022, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion, hold one moment, please. I'm trying to find the... I'm looking for the, that's it. Yeah. So I would entertain a motion to forgive the taxes and principal due for the tax years 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022, for a grand total of $3,633.08 for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 139.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rantrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Mr. Dean, the Town Manager's report, please.
So, just to give a shout-out to the Water Department today, they responded in a semi-emergency situation. We had our pool close. It was closed for a couple of hours, so I just wanted to recognize the Department and just to say thank you for the great response that they gave us. We were able to get back up and running. And our Assistant Town Manager was out there as well. And so thanks to her and the team that worked on this issue.
I can attest this afternoon that there were several hundred happy campers.
Yeah.
So thank you to the Water Department.
Today's the kind of day that we would expect to be up and running, so Murphy's Law struck. So we have, this is a busy week, we have a Budget Recommendations Committee meeting coming up on Wednesday. That is the initial kickoff of our upcoming budget season. So that, I'll be attending that. And also, there's a Planning Board CIP meeting on Thursday, so I'll be attending that as well. And that's to go through the initial CIP requests from the departments, and the Planning Board has got copies of that and is able to go through that as well. And in other news, I was at a Health Trust Retreat for three days last week, two and a half days, really. It was very well, it was very informative, and was good to be able to attend that. And then the last thing I had on my list is the vehicles and equipment. We're in the process of talking to departments just about shipment of vehicles and the ordering process. So I may have some more detail for the Board on that. But one of the things that we always talk about at the BRC meeting is, where are we with the warrant articles that we have approved? And so we will have some more information on that for Wednesday night.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dean, for the next meeting, could we maybe knock on Attorney Mitchell's door and see if there's any update on Swayze?
Yeah, you read my mind, because I actually did that today, and I did not hear back, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Rantrioloff, did you have any meetings?
No reports to, no, no committee reports.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Yep, I had the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. We are looking for members. We did some abatements and nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
I have nothing to report since the last meeting, except for I did attend the National Night Out on Parkway on Tuesday, last Tuesday. And it was a lot of fun. And I promised I would sit in the dunk tank next year. Couldn't do it this year. Next, and I'll have a, I'll have a chance to get into a better bathing suit. It's being recorded, so. No, it was a lot of fun. There were, it was a good turnout, a lot of good vendors and information. Civic service units were there to promote great actions, so. I got to, when did I get a snow cone from the Kiwanis Club? And a sheriff's badge, I got sworn in as a sheriff. And then coming up is a Heritage Commission meeting, we don't have an agenda yet. And they're also... also, our chair is making the PSA that we've been talking about, the commercial for looking at what the committees and commissions do and getting volunteers. So that's gonna be happening very shortly. And the HDC has one case on Thursday, fifteenth, replacing windows and doors in the back of one of the buildings on Water Street. That's it.
Terrific, thank you. Selectwoman Belanger?
You did one more thing. Um, National Night Out, the same day we did the ribbon cutting...
Oh.
For the, for the Park Street Playground, and that's the reason why I didn't make it to the National Night Out, because I overheated and it took a few hours to get myself, um, yes, but...
Oh, hence the dunk tank.
Yeah, I know.
I probably should've, but Julie was the ribbon cutter, so, um, but this week I have Conservation Commission tomorrow night, we have the budget kickoff meeting Wednesday night, we also have public input for Planet Playground, did I say that right? And then Thursday night, I have Planning Board, CIP excited, and then Friday morning housing, so my next one will be...
All right. Well, thank you all, I did not have any meetings, but I regret that I missed both the ribbon cutting and National Night Out, because I was out of town for a week with my son, but I wanna just commend the Parks and Rec Department for the job they've done, and, and also, really, the neighborhood, because the neighborhood really worked with Mr. Beeson, and they were instrumental in, in what we're presenting to folks, so I really would like to shout-out to the neighborhood.
Mm.
All the work they've done, and the feedback, and just, just an outstanding, small community within that neighborhood.
There were two children there, some representatives from the neighborhood were there, but two children that fit the equipment, and they were the first ones in, and unfortunately, it was, was two o'clock on one of the nice ninety-degree days, so the slide was too hot to use, and climbing structures are too hot, so swings are okay.
Well, it looked fun, I did see some pictures, and, and ironically, as I was at my son's baseball game, something on Facebook came up from last year's National Night Out, which was me in the dunk tank, so I'm sorry you couldn't have enjoyed the fun, but I'm sorry I missed that, but, again, a shout-out to both our police and fire departments, and particularly Detective Bruce Page, who...
Organized.
Works so hard for many months to, to make that so much fun for our community, so thank you all. Well done. Okay, correspondence, um, the chair of the BRC has given us the preliminary meeting dates for the Budget Recommendations Committee. We have a note from Department of Transportation on, regarding the Exeter Highway Block Grant. We have a note from Xfinity about some channel changes, and we have two notices of gratitude from New Generation and Richie McFarlane Children's Center for donations that were Before we move into non-public this evening, reviewing the board calendar, we meet again on August twenty-second, and then, as agreed, Tuesday, September sixth, here in the Novak Room. And we can delve deeper into September at our next meeting.
Can you go over that again one more time?
August twenty-second.
Yep.
And September sixth, which is a Tuesday because of the Labor Day holiday.
They are both already on my calendar, look at that.
Excellent.
All right.
Um, Mr. Dean, I, I need the RSA, please.
So it's ninety-one A three-two A?
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public session, and RSA ninety-one three-two A?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Rontree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Board will be moving into non-public.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels ninety-eight and twenty-two. Channel ninety-eight is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel twenty-two, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU sixteen and can be found on Channel thirteen, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments...